Ho, 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 Merry Christmas.
(laughing).
Yes, Merry Christmas, everybody, and welcome to the Tupelo Regular City Council Meeting of December the 24th, 2021. I hope everybody's in a Christmas mood tonight. At this time, I'd ask everyone to stand and ask Mr. Robert Cook to come and lead us in our invocation and remain standing as I will lay you in the pledge.
May we bow our head. Father in heaven, we thank you, oh, we thank you, Lord, for this past year, all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us, Lord. We thank you, Lord, in advance for the blessings that you would bestow on us in the coming year. We ask that you continue to be with us. I ask, Lord, that you will be with this mayor, our council, our department heads, Lord, the workers that have made so many contributions to this city, that it can make it to be a better place, Lord, to work, live, and play in it. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Brother Robert. If you would, face the flag with me. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we see it? I'll now call this meeting to order and ask our Vice President, Mr. Lynn Bryan, for the confirmational amendment to the agenda and agenda order.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the agenda and the agenda order.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor of this? Thank you very much. We'll now go to proclamations, recognitions, and reports agenda, and beginning with the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a special proclamation today, one of our, I guess, longest-serving city employees, Chief Jackie Clayton, and I'll read it. Whereas Jackie Clayton, a native of Hottecot County, was hired on August 20th, 1979 by then Tupelo Police Department Chief Ed Crowder. And whereas Chief Clayton, a 1978 graduate of the University of Mississippi with a bachelor of science in public administration, criminal justice, worked his way up through the ranks from patrolman to chief of police. And whereas Chief Clayton's Tupelo Police Department career began with the patrol and motorcycle unit, and after being promoted to supervisory role, Chief Clayton served as shift sergeant, shift lieutenant, shift captain, and patrol shift major. And whereas in 2013, Chief Clayton's duties were again expanded with his being major of operations and taking on the responsibility of supervising the North Mississippi Narcotics Unit as well as parole, patrol operations. And whereas in July of 2021, Chief Clayton assumed the role of chief police. And whereas during Chief Clayton's service with the Tupelo Police Department, he helped in the organization of Tupelo's Police Field Training Officer Program, and Chief Clayton was also a 1998 graduate of the Federal Bureau of Investigations National Academy Session Number 192. And whereas with over 42 years of continuous law enforcement service to the Tupelo Police Department and the citizens of Tupelo, Chief Clayton is currently the longest-serving officer in Tupelo Police Department.
Stand.
Now, therefore, I, Todd Jordan, Mayor of the City of Tupelo, Mississippi, do hereby proclaim December 21st, 2021, is Jackie Clayton Day.
At this time, we'll go to, there are no boy or girl scouts here tonight that I'm aware of. We'll go to employee recognitions. Again, Mayor.
Yes, we have one independent. Bruce Dotson, gone now. With sincere appreciation, the City of Tupelo recognizes Bruce Dotson, Police Department, for 25 years of dedicated employment.
At this time, we'll go to public recognitions, and I'll begin with Ms. Nettie.
I don't have anything other than just wish everyone a happy new year and hope it will be filled with what the real purpose of the reason for the season. And I'd just like to thank everybody for everything that we've done to make the city the great city that is.
Thank you, Ms. Nettie. Travis?
Yes, President Palmer, I'd like to just give a shout out to NAACP for recognizing one of our own, Ms. Nettie Davis, last Saturday night, and it was in her honor. That great turnout, great program. Ms. Nettie gave a great introduction, and Mr. Palmer got it started off with a great introduction. So shout out to both Mr. Palmer and Ms. Nettie, and congratulations to you. The second recognition is we have in our presence tonight a person tomorrow that will be fourscore and one years old, and that is our President, Mr. Buddy Palmer. And I would like to ask if you'd join us in wishing him a happy birthday by singing "Happy Birthday."
(laughing) Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Buddy. Happy birthday to you.[494.12][494.12](applause).
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you, Travis. Lynn?
I don't have anything.
Ms. Rosie?
I don't have anything.
Ms. Janet?
I don't have anything.
Janet?
No.
Thank you very much. And now, we'll go to the mayor's remarks.
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, congratulations for making another year.
Thank you.[519.29][519.29](laughing).
Hopefully, we all do, and many more, and I'll second Coach Beard's appreciation for Ms. Nettie. And I tell you, if you've never been to an event where Ms. Nettie gets an award, it's an event.[535.04][535.04](laughing). She does this city proud, and she loves this city, and I appreciate Mr. Charles Moore and the NAACP for recognizing her at the banquet the other night. Nothing too much. You know, I keep saying that the city is doing very well, and we're really busy, and I'd like to call Alex up here for a minute, and he's going to put some numbers that are pretty astonishing.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to share with the city council some really good news as we round out a year. For the longest time, the Tupelo Convention and Visitors Bureau has tracked our economic revenue, like, through our sports and things like that for years. In 2015, we started reporting that when we did the State of the City, and that was part of my report that I presented each year going forward. And to give you a little history with this, in 2000, actually, we did it in 2014. 2014, we had, for the first time, that we reported about $1.9 million of revenue that all the sports brought into the city. 2015 was the highest year that we ever had, which was 2.8 million. So in '16 through '19, we were right there averaging about 2.5, 2.6 million with everything. And 2020, we were at our lowest, which was at 1.8 million. However, I will brag about that 1.8 million for a second because y'all, as an administration, allowed the leeway for us to still do outdoor events, and so we still did 1.8 million. And that was also, we actually were able to put not people on our ball fields and kids had some normalcy, but we also put people in hotels when it was tough, and they also came and ate at our restaurants when it was in a tough time. So that was really good. So, record-breaking, record-breaking year for 2021. So out of everything that we did, we were just a little over $4 million in 2021, which is a record-breaker. And out of those were some sports that were just, and I'll use softball for as an example. Softball had been, you know, averaging around like 180, you know, they never even broke the $200,000 mark for their tournaments. In 2021, they went from under $200,000 to $970,000 in 2021.
Wow.
So, a lot of good stuff. Now, also, what's not included in this number, now, that is what, that number is derived from baseball, softball, Aquatic Center Soccer, and tennis alone. What's not in there that Brian Rucker helped me put together, that he tracks also, is, you know, events like 5K runs, the half marathon, you know, gymnastics cheer, the cornhole tournament, you know, that we hosted this year. Those are things that I don't necessarily track, but Brian does. Those events outside of mine were at $615,000 of economic revenue to the city. So as a total, in 2021, we did $4.6 million of economic revenue to the city, which is unbelievable, and is a record-breaker. And I'll stand up here and say to you that this is not just, this is not just me. I'm reporting it, but it's not just me. It's not just Park and Rec, it's CBB, it's administration giving money and letting us improve our complexes, it's water and light, public works that help out in all these different facets to make everything that we do work. So just wanted to share good news, and just proud to be a part of this.[770.44][770.44](applause).
Thank you, Alex, and, you know, that's why we have and we will continue to invest in our sports facilities. It brings people here, and, you know, our job is to get them here and to keep them here. Besides that, I'll have you think. Merry Christmas to everyone, and we'll look forward to a great New Year's event next Friday night.
There you go. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Alex. At this time, we'll close the regular meeting and open the public agenda, beginning with the public hearings, which we have none, appeals we have none. At this time, we have a citizens' hearing, and Mr. Charles Moore, if you would, you ready?
(inaudible) next year. Some of you could not make it.
So you want to do this next year?
(inaudible).
Very good. Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore, appreciate that. We'll now close the public agenda and open the regular session, beginning, we have no items on the action agenda. We'll begin with the reg, routine agenda, beginning with item number three, and the matter of the minutes of December 5th, 2021 council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Lynn Bryan, second by Ms. Rosie. All in favor, raise your hand. That's unanimous, thank you. The next item is in the matter of bill pay, and at tonight, we had Mr. Travis Beard, Ms. Janet Gaston, Mr. Lynn Bryan, I help a little bit, and we had Johnny Timmons and Tracy Dillard there. So do I have a motion for bill pay?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Gaston, a second by Travis Beard, all in favor. That's unanimous, thank you. Item number five is in the matter of advertising and promotional items.
I move that we would approve the advertising and promotion items.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Nettie, a second by Lynn. The items tonight would be WLO for Martin Luther King ad, the PPI, the $1,695 parking rec leisure guides, the $1,084 for the Aquatic Center splash brochures. By the way, the Aquatic Center is doing very well. I pass by there every day. It's fantastic. Committee for King, $2,000, Lee County Courier Seasoned Greetings from the Mayor and City Council for $350. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Item number six, in the matter of approval of 2021 contract for Mute.
Immediately approved.
Second.
We have a motion by Travis Beard, a second by Ms. Rosie. All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you.
I just want to make a comment that Mute has done a super job with the homeless task force, and we have, I think, two of them present tonight, if they could just stand, but we've had, we're really, they're doing great things, and I want to make a comment on that, Mr. Palmer, before we go on. But the two at a present.
Yes, Sarah, would you like to say anything about this at all?
I don't have to, just thank y'all for being so supportive. We've grown here a lot, and it's not necessarily just because of the need, it's just that we are offering better services to the homeless, so our staff and capacity is great, and that, and thank y'all for being so supportive.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate that. We'll go to item seven now, in the matter of resolution authorizing the City of Tupelo's participation in the National Opioid Litigation Settlement.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Chad, we have a second by Janet and Travis. David Green, ladies and gentlemen. Yes, I was looking for you.
Thank you, President Palmer. If the council remembers, several years ago, the City of Tupelo joined in the National Opioid Litigation, which was targeted at opioid manufacturers and their distributors. And the attempt was to reimburse municipalities and local governments for the expense of fighting the opioid abuse pandemic. So these, resolution has, our settlement has been reached in those cases, and so this resolution allows us to execute necessary documents so that the City of Tupelo can receive their funds from the settlement. We expect to receive somewhere up to $400,000 out of this.
Very good. Any questions, or? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Item number eight, in the matter of the planning committee minutes of December the 6th, 2021.
Move, approve. Second.
We have a motion by Travis Beard, a second by Lynn Bryan, Tanner?
I just ask that the council accept these minutes from the December 6th Planning Committee meeting, and any further actions as far as the recommendations will be taken up at a later date.
Any questions for Tanner? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Item number nine, in the matter of review slash approve license commission minutes for November 15th, 2021 meeting.
So moved. Approve. Second.
We have a motion by Travis Beard, a second by Lynn Bryan, Tanner?
President Palmer is saying, just ask that the council accept these minutes from the November 15th License Commission meeting, and likewise, will bring forward their recommendations next month.
Any question for Tanner? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you, Tanner. Next item is item number 10, in the matter of bid award for project number T16305 Gun Club Road Improvements.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Travis Beard, a second by Ms. Nettie. Dennis?
Good evening. We opened bids on December 7th for the Gun Club Road Improvements. The engineered estimate was $1,576,074.75. Low bidder was James Hodges Construction of South Tilla, an amount of $1,131,541.31. So great to see us come in below the estimate, so we're asking the council this evening to approve this bid award so we can get those documents out and signatures and execute contract.
Thank you, Dennis. Any questions for Dennis? Very good to come in up under the bid. All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Item number 11, in the matter of Axon Enterprise as sole source.
I move that we would approve Axon Enterprise as a sole source.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Nettie, a second by Ms. Rosie. Jackie?
Yes, thank you. The police department's upgrading tasers for our officers, and we ask that we use this vendor that's listed as a sole source, that has what we need, it is the only company that sells this type of taser.
Thank you, Jackie. Any questions?
Yes. Mr. Clayton, are they trained with these tasers?
Yes, ma'am, they are. There's extensive training, 41s allowed to carry them, and their certification, they're ever so often with them.
Okay. When carrying, do, are they on the same size as the weapon?
No, ma'am. It's opposite side of the gun, whichever side that is.
Okay, I just wanted to know.
Any further questions? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. The next item is 12, in the matter of smart ray vision as a sole source.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Travis Beard, a second by Mr. Chad Mims. Jackie?
This is also a request for sole source of the company listed, our EOD or Bond Squad needs this item for x-rays of items when they go to a call-out, and this vendor is the only one that carries that, what they need.
Any questions? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Item number 13, in the matter of surplus weapon for retirement.
Immediately approved. Second.
We have a motion by Travis Beard, a second by Mr. Lynn Bryan. Let me just read this. I don't think I need to call on you on this. This is, this is to accept the letter of request to surplus Chief Jackie Clayton's duty weapon, Glock 45, 9mm, serial number BKLR976, for $1, which will be turned over to him for his retirement from the City of Tupelo and the Tupelo Police Department as permissible under State Statute 45-9-131. And I want you to know that you've done a wonderful, wonderful job, and I just think that if you've got something to say, you can certainly say it now, but...
Well, I've already related to Claire Jordan that it was a privilege and an honor to be asked to carry this load of the police department, or a chief could be selected. I think, I think a very, the chief that has been selected will do well. He and I have known each other for many years. We have talked in the last few months, and he's not going to miss a beat, and I appreciate the opportunity, I really do, thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. We have a motion. Take it, all in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Next item is item 14, in the matter of surplusing a city vehicle. Again, chief.
This vehicle listed in 2010, needs to fight. Our current, is currently maintained by our city narcotics, our North Mississippi Narcotics Unit. We would like to be able to surplus that for the amount there, sold for the amount given there to the South Tilla Police Department, who has been voted in recently in the North Mississippi Narcotics Unit. That's what we ask.
I move that we approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Travis Beard, a second by Ms. Janet Gaston. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, Jackie. Number 15, in the matter of bid rejection, 2021-036PW of pole barn at Metro Lay Down Yard.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Travis Beard, a second by Mr. Lynn Bryan. Chuck?
Good evening. This is just a simple bid to reject the bid, it's simple, we have a plane to the bottom of walls. We will, we will reschedule to bring back you guys, whatever.
That's pretty simple. Any questions? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Number 716, in the matter of bid approval, compact excavator and alternate bid rejection of 24-foot goose neck trailer.
I move that we would approve the compact excavator and alternate, alternated bid rejecting 24 goose leg, goose leg, uh, trailer.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Nettie Davis, a second by Travis Beard. Chuck?
Thank you, sir. This is a two-part bid. The first one is from Thompson Machinery. We had three bidders. Thompson Machinery is the best bid. It's not the lowest, but it's the best. It's got better warranty, bigger motor, and a lot more features on it. And then the second one, we just asked to reject it because of the timing. It's what they get here, it's going to be six to 12 months, and we can get one here locally within the month, so I just ask that you approve one and reject the other.
Any question for Chuck? We have a motion, second. All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Item number 17, in the matter of bid approval, Knuckle Boom Loader Truck, 2021-032PW.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Travis Beard, a second by Ms. Rosie Jones. Chuck?
Sir, this is a brush truck, or knuckle boom truck. We had one bidder through the reverse bid for $205,500. It's going to take 300 days to get here, so I hope that's not a big deal, but it's going to come out of sanitation account.
Any questions? All in favor? That's unanimous. 18, in the matter of bid award, 2021-034WL Concrete Pole.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Lynn Bryan, we have a second by Janet, Mr. Timmons.
The bid for you tonight is concrete poles supplied for 12 months, which we use in electrical system in the City of Tupelo. As you can see, Stress Creek was a low bidder. We use Stress Creek poles for many years, so I recommend Stress Creek to you for this bid.
Any questions for Mr. Timmons? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, Johnny. Item number 19 is in the matter of approval of bid number 2021-033WL Sources of Supply.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Travis Beard, a second by Ms. Gaston. Mr. Timmons?
Yes, this is a sole source bid for Water and Sew Department. We use this in our, when we have emergency pipe laying or anything of that sort. It covers every size of digging, deep piping of any type, rental of equipment through the contractor. And as you can see, Mr. Smithy was the low bid. We've used Mr. Smithy on these projects before, and I highly recommend Smithy Construction for this.
Are there any questions for Mr. Timmons? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, Johnny. Well, you've got one more, though. Item number 20, in the matter of bad debt write-off, July 2020 through December 2020.
I move that we would approve the bad debt write-off for December 2020.
Second.
Through that route.
We have a motion by Ms. Nettie Davis, a second by Mr. Lynn Bryan. Johnny Timmons?
This is a requirement of TBA that we retire this debt every so often. This period would be for July 2020 to December 2020. If you'll look, your total revenue during that period was 37,436, and actually, the uncollected was 32,308, which is 0.08 of 1%. So Carol Botts and her staff, the collection office, do a fabulous job collecting these bids.
That's pretty good. Any questions for Johnny? All in favor? That's unanimous. We'll now close the regular session. We have no items for the study agenda. Counselor, do we have a need for executive session?
We do not, President Palmer.
We do not have a need for executive session. I want to wish again, everybody, a happy, happy New Year and a Merry Christmas. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by Lynn Bryan, we have a second by Travis, and we have a giggle by Ms. Rosie. All in favor? We are adjourned. Merry Christmas. Let's do it one more time, Travis.